So you tell us. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the Mayor and City Council Public Hearing, August 4th. CU 125 Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Community, an application for conditional use with site plan for the Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Community. The subject property is Sussex County Tax Parcel Number 335-814-43.00. Everybody knows that, right? Located on the west side of Donovan's Road in the city of Lewis, zoning R2. And as always in our public hearings, I first go to city staff, city engineer, city solicitor, in this case, it's Mr. Walton, and then we'll ask the applicant to make as brief an application as you can, but do not feel that we're going to put you into a sandwich. If you need more time, let the chair know that you need more time. And then we're going to go direct to public comment. That's a change for those of you perhaps. We want to hear, this is a public hearing, so we want to hear from all of you. And then when the public comment online and present in the room is finished, then we'll go to council asking the questions of the applicant. And I encourage the public, when you have comments, questions, you address them to council, not directly to the applicant. One other caution is, in a public hearing and public comment, we don't answer you directly. It is not interactive. However, we're listening. We're listening online comments, we're listening to you, and then we'll do our best in our time to incorporate some of those comments. Okay, with that, I'll go to city staff to explain what we are doing tonight specifically.
Thank you. So this is conditional use application for the use as a manufactured home park. The property is the existing Donovan Smith Manufactured Home Park located off Donovan's Road. The property was annexed into the city with a R2 zoning. The community was considered legal nonconforming when it was under the jurisdiction of Sussex County. The community existed prior to zoning in Sussex County. The property contains an existing nonconforming manufactured home park. Again, it's owned R2. And the use of a manufactured home park requires a conditional use within the R2 zoning district. So conditional uses are uses that are generally desirable for that general convenience and welfare, but because of their nature require additional review to assess their impact on neighboring properties in the entire city, which is the reason for the conditional use. So the Planning Commission held a public hearing and discussed the application at their meeting on June 18th of this year. At that time, the Planning Commission recommended approval to the Mayor and City Council of the conditional use with 13 conditions. Those were identified in your staff report. Just so everybody else is aware, for a little bit of background, the site contains 129 land lease areas within the park, along with two open space areas. There are a number of existing nonconforming land lease areas, and so those were identified in the space as well. The development does contain 7.44 acres of open space, and they are identified in two different areas. A portion of the property is located within the floodplain. They already have existing homes on them, so if something does happen, they will have to comply with the city's floodplain regulations. The electric is a unique situation, as the Lewis Board of Public Works maintains a portion of the electric in the community, and the majority of it is privately maintained by the property owner. This, again, came through the city, was annexed to get water and sewer. That has been completed, so all the homes that are currently out there have water and sewer from the Board of Public Works. And the road was redone because of the construction for that, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. To the city engineer, can I just kind of go through your perspective as well?
Okay. So, one thing, of the 24 septic tanks, 22 of them remain in place that were crushed and filled, and two were removed. Those were the two steel tanks. So that process was done, and we do have the onsite abandonment report from Denrec. So all the land lease areas do have sewer and water now from the BPW. And the BPW is still working with the owner on the easements, getting that finalized for the water sewer and for the electric.
Okay. And back to the city planner, just for the public, because this is land lease, and I know that's kind of a confusing concept, just describe that a little bit, rather than, we don't refer to them as parcels.
Correct. So it's all one large tax parcel. It has one main tax parcel number. This has not been subdivided. So what, when this was originally created, land lease areas were identified that people would lease that land or rent that land from the property owner. And as part of this, all of those land lease areas have been identified, and now we now have a meets and bounds legal description for all of those, which was a concern from the residents in the past. They didn't know where their property boundary ended. And we also know where all of the homes and accessory structures are located on those land lease areas as well. So again, it's one massive parcel of land that has then been split up and is leased individually, but they don't have a separate tax parcel number.
Okay. No, that's very helpful. To the city manager, do you have any additional comments you want to make? All right. Mr. Walton?
It's nice to see you all. It's nice to be back, but I do not have any further comments.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll turn it over to the applicant forward. And one thing, will you be addressing each of the LPC conditions?
Absolutely.
Terrific.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council for the record, John Pardee with the law firm Rockstep Mendellis Federico, with law offices in Dover and also here in Lewis. I have a handout that I'd like to present, which I think will help expedite the hearing.
Terrific. Thank you. And I should have said from the beginning, I don't know if Councilman Elder is online? Is he online? Okay, good. So council is all here. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to be very brief, which is sometimes difficult for me, but I'll give it a good shot. So you'll see in our outline, the first substantive section, Roman numeral 2, deals with compliance with the city code. And we've spoken about this during previous hearings. I don't think it's ever been disputed or contested that we satisfy the applicable code conditions. And so, in the interest of time, what I like to do is spend some time talking about the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended, because I think most of those conditions are certainly very reasonable and understandable, and we agree with most of them. There's just a couple that are problematic. So you'll see, for example, in number one and two, our only comment was to suggest slightly different language, because the conditions were couched in terms of not allowing a building permit to be issued until the conditions were met. And we don't have a problem with that concept, but I'm not sure that building permit is the correct nomenclature. I believe what is typically obtained when you go to place a home in a manufactured home community is really called a placement permit, but the concept we agree with, that there wouldn't be any permits issued until those particular conditions were met.
Can I ask you, just particularly for those online, do you mind reading the condition? Or read it, but I think that will help everybody to know.
Yep, good idea. So the first condition that the Planning Commission recommended at their June 18 meeting was, quote, "Remove the multiflora rosa invasive species in the open space. This shall be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit." And so my response to that was, we agree to that, we just would respectfully suggest that the limitation should be, "No permit for the placement of any additional homes within the community shall be issued until all of the conditions of approval shown on the final site plan have been satisfied." And that's our same comment with the second condition, which reads, "Clean up all debris in the open space areas throughout the site. This shall be completed prior to the issuance of a building permit." So again, we agree with the condition, just suggest a slight tweak in the language. The third condition is a problem, really not so much for us as it is for Denrec. The comment, or the condition recommended by the Planning Commission reads, "Tain and submit to the city Denrec approval before any building permit is issued for any site that formerly contained the now abandoned septic tanks or septic fields. The owner shall provide written notification to potential residents of the septic fields or tank site advising that the area previously contained a septic field or septic tank." And we don't really have any problem with the second sentence of that proposed condition. It's, you know, transparency, put people on notice, they understand what's underneath their home, we have no problem with that. The problem is that Denrec can't do what the commission is asking them to do. And I had a chance to communicate with John Taylor, who's the Deputy Attorney General who helped negotiate the MOU and all of the conditions in the MOU. And what he said in response to this comment, it's in our outline, I'll read it briefly. He says, "All septic tanks used prior to installation of sewer service at Donovan Smith MHP were abandoned in accordance with Section 5.4.8 of Denrec's regulations governing the design, installation, and operation of onsite wastewater treatment and disposal systems." And he gives the citation to the regulation. Then he says, "This is supported by the abandonment report you located and shared with me." And your engineer made reference to that abandonment report in his remarks. Mr. Taylor goes on to say, "Notably, these," meaning Denrec regulations, "do not place restrictions for usage of areas containing onsite wastewater treatment disposal systems that were abandoned and restored properly, and thus Denrec is without authority to regulate, i.e. either authorize or restrict, construction or placement of structures on those areas. Such regulation presumably falls to the city and/or county. One would think that the city of Lewis would acknowledge the abandonment report as evidence of compliance with relevant Denrec requirements." So what he's saying there, in layman's terms, is, "We don't do that, and we can't do that." And so if you're asking Denrec to come out and bless it, we, in a sense, already done that by virtue of the abandonment report. They have signed off and certified that all of the tanks were properly abandoned, meaning that those lots are safe for the placement of homes. So respectfully, we would ask that that condition be removed. Then the next several conditions, four, five, eight, I'm sorry, four, five, six, seven, and eight, I'm sorry, four, five, six, and seven, we have no issue with. I'll read those briefly. Number four was, "Provide a turnaround at the end of Lot A25 for emergency access if required by the Office of State Fire Marshal." We didn't bother to inquire whether it's required by the Office of State Fire Marshal. We agreed that it made sense, was a good idea to provide plenty of room for EMS vehicles to turn around at the end of that street, so we agree to do that, obviously at our cost. Number five, pay $5,000 to the Donovan Smith MHP Community Association as offered for the installation of amenities at the park in the open space. As offered in the record, this should be completed within six months from final site plan approval. And we have no problem with that. We offered to do it, and I suspect that we'll make that payment as soon as the site plan gets final approval. We'll be happy to do that, so they can take advantage of the opportunity to place amenities in the open space, whatever amenities they choose. We thought it made more sense to let the community decide what they should be, rather than have our client try to put something up that maybe they don't want. Number six, the maximum number of land lease areas shall be 129. We accept that. Number seven, owners shall be required to execute and record the applicable utility easements with the City of Lewis Board of Public Works prior to the grant of the conditional use permit. We have no problem with that. Now, at the time of the Planning Commission hearing, we were really only talking about sewer and water utility easements. And there actually is a declaration of easements for the sewer and water lines, recorded presently in favor of BPW, but there were some changes that were made on the ground when the lines were put in. And so that, those easements have to be amended. And my clients already signed them, I have them in my hands, and I told council for BPW I would provide those to them as soon as the application was approved. It doesn't really make sense to record another easement if it's not going to be approved. In the meantime, and I think you've received a letter, should be in the record, from Mike Hoffman, who's counsel for the BPW, there was discussion about electrical easements. And so we did a title search, we found out that there's not currently an easement recorded for electrical lines.
Oh, Jesus.
Oops. If you're online, if you can put yourself on mute, that would be great.
So we've agreed to do that, and Mr. Hoffman is in the process of...
(inaudible).
Excuse me. Blue, can you mute that person? Thank you. Okay. Unless they need to call 911, they sound troubled. Oh, you think it's my colleague? Okay. Okay. I think we'll go ahead.
And so we agree to sign that easement, and we agree that you should make it a condition of any approval. We have no problem with that, and we can talk a little bit about the electric if you want, but basically, what happens is the BPW provides the electric service. They have a main line that comes into the community, it feeds to a pole where our client provides, for lack of a better word, junction box, and then there are connections from the junction box to the homes. And so we agree to provide whatever easement is deemed necessary by the BPW, and that that should be a condition of approval. I will just briefly mention that BPW maintains their line, we maintain the junction box, and then the lines going to the homes are supposed to be maintained by the lot owners. Our client has from time to time helped voluntarily to repair those, and we'll continue to work with the residents. We don't want anybody to have any question about their electrical service, but we're doing everything that we can to ensure that under the law. Number eight, this was a condition we had an issue with, and I don't, I think there might be just some semantic misunderstanding here. What the condition says is, "The landlord must obtain all required variances before obtaining permits to place mobile homes on sites that do not meet code requirements, including but not limited to lot with minimum area, frontage, and separation requirements." Now, conceptually, we don't have any problem with that, but remember what we're doing here is we're recording a site plan, and that site plan, I believe it's in your packet, there's a diagram of the community that Janelle provided that's color-coded, it has 11, I'm sorry, it has some of the numbers, but it has, yellow lots are those that are less than 2,400 square feet, and purple lots are those that don't have the 35 feet of frontage. So if you apply this literally, each one of those lots would have to come get a variance because they don't meet those requirements, but that's kind of the point of recording the site plan. So what we're saying is, to the extent that the site plan gets recorded, and that essentially excuses the lack of compliance that would otherwise be required by the code, then they don't need to come get a variance for that. So, you know, a purple lot that only has 30 feet of frontage, you're approving that by blessing this site plan. They don't need to come back later and get a variance for that 30 feet, because that's what the site plan shows their lot to be. Same thing with the 2,400 square feet. But everything else, setbacks, separation distances, obviously all of that would apply. So anything that's not reflected on the site plan, they would have to get a variance for. And so I won't bore you with my suggested language, you can read it for yourself, but that's the concept, that, yes, we agree, to the extent that some of these lots that didn't have homes on them, and they want to bring a home in, and it doesn't fit for whatever reason, they're going to have to get variances, except for what's shown on the plan. If the lot width is already blessed by the site plan, if the square footage is less than 2,400 is blessed by the site plan, they wouldn't need a variance for that, but they would need a variance for anything else. Number nine, no building permit shall be issued until the conditions have been met. We agree with that conceptually, again, just suggested the tweak on the language, that it would be permit for placement as opposed to a building permit. But again, no problem with that comment or condition. Now, number 10, this was another one that we had a slight issue with. It says, "The owner shall correct stagnant standing water by grading planting trees or shrubs or other means." Now, at the Planning Commission hearing, I believe it was the BPW's engineer that stated that, to his knowledge, there was no stagnant or standing water in the community. You had testimony from residents to the contrary, but, you know, the entire park was essentially regraded by the BPW. And to our best information, there aren't any issues out there with standing water or stagnant water.
No, it's running water.
Yeah. Is that Councilman Elder? You just need to mute Councilman while we're listening to the applicant, please.
So, I mean, to the extent that somebody can prove us wrong about that, you know, we're happy to entertain solutions, but right now, it's our understanding confirmed by the BPW engineer that there's not standing water in the community. Number 11 says, "Identify on the final site plan where the former septic tanks and septic fields were located." Again, no problem with that, also no problem with notifying future residents that their lot formerly had a septic tank on it, if that's the case. Number 12, I think this is the last one, no, I'm sorry, next to last. Number 12 says, "Consider site testing of soil and water for contaminants or environmental hazards created by historic sewage overflow on the property." And again, we went back to Mr. Taylor at Denrec, and he said, "I'm sorry, we've already been there, done that," essentially. I'll read what his email said, and by the way, his email's attached as Exhibit A in our materials. He says, "As to the soil testing issue, Denrec noted that all areas where surfacing had occurred prior to the sewer installation and tank abandonment were previously disinfected with lime, and at this point also the sun's UV rays, without any present indication of surfacing wastewater, which would seem extremely unlikely given the tank abandonment and sewer installation, which eliminated the source of prior contamination. Denrec has no obligation or authority to require or perform testing of the soil surrounding the abandoned tanks." So again, in layman's terms, what Mr. Taylor is saying effectively is, you've got an abandonment report. We did, you know, when we investigated this, and we filed notices of violation, and then we negotiated the MOU, this was all resolved by virtue of the BPW's installation of the new public sewer line. And as far as Denrec's concerned, there is no environmental contamination out there at this point. Number 13, the last one, is kind of a summary, and we have no problem with that, really, just says, "The final site plan shall be amended to show compliance with the conditions of approval, whatever they may end up being, and such conditions shall be listed on the final site plan." So in summary, we were fine with conditions 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, and 11, but for the reasons I mentioned, we're not able to comply with conditions 3, 8, 10, and 12. And that concludes my presentation. I suspect that you have some questions, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Ms. Priti. Thank you for a very thorough report. Thanks to the Planning Commission for all of their due diligence. We're going to turn it over to the public, so you can be seated. And so we'll start with anyone in the room that would like to come forward. If you do, tell us your name and your address, and then you'll be on a three-minute clock, and we're interested in your comments. So we'll start with anyone in the room.
Donna Bear.
And your address, please, Ms. Bear.
16433 Fairview Circle. Thank you, Donovan Smith. There had been, where the septic were before, overflowed onto the ground sludge for years. You can't tell me that's not contaminated. It could be filled in, but it needs to be tested by somebody. That just didn't go away because you filled in the tank. The electrical is horrible. My neighbor's power went out two months ago for four days. It took Donovan Smith four days to get the electric back on. Part of the box was replaced, not the whole thing. But when everybody's there running their air conditioners, we lose power. The wires are two inches above our trailer, so when it's windy, it's like you're going to be electrocuted. And it's nobody's problem. It's not cable, it's not the parks, it's not, well, it's somebody's problem. Those wires are grouping, they weren't put in that way. As far as getting variances, this isn't rocket science. This is the size of the lot. This is what you can put on. Mobile homes come in many different sizes. It's like Ford, Chevy, Jeep, they all do the same thing, they're all different sizes. Maybe one manufacturer only has one size, but there are many different sizes. You don't need all these variances. Another thing, everybody needs an outdoor shed. We're at the beach, we have bicycles, we have beach equipment, we have chairs, lawn mowers, grills. If you get a huge mobile home in one of these lots, where are you going to put your outdoor shed? We had something that came around now, they want to beautify everything, they don't want junk cars sitting around and stuff. That's great, but a sewage pit that was there for a year, that's okay? And you need a place to put all your stuff, you're at the beach.
Thank you.
There was probably more, but we didn't have a list, it would have been nice. I'm sure I forgot something.
We'll still have a public comment period, so as you remember things, you can also send those notes in to us. Okay? So this isn't your last bite at that apple. Okay? Absolutely. Thank you. Other comments from some folks in the audience? Yes? Okay. Yes, I was just seeing if there were residents' comments first.
I'm sitting here, don't mind. Okay, so I wanted to, I wanted to speak because...
Just say your name.
Terry Boray, 1900 of Yarwood, and I'm a member of the Planning Commission. I remember the mayor saying that at some point she would like a member of the Planning Commission to be, you know, in these various hearings, to recall what had happened. And so I'm not mandated by my colleagues, but since I'm the only one from the Planning Commission here today, I'm going to say a few words about that. You raised the question of the placement permit versus the building permit. This is something that the Planning Commission didn't have a chance to go into, because we were not alerted to the fact that there might be a difference between a placement permit and a building permit. What the Planning Commission's intent was, that before any structure be placed on the new lots, and actually also on the existing lots, in case one of the structures need to be replaced, this should go through some sort of procedure with the city's building officials. Whether it's called a building permit or a placement permit is a technicality for which I think I, as a member of the Planning Commission, would be very interested in of hearing a comment from the city planner, because it's very unclear to me at this point what the difference is between the two. But the intent was very clear. There are lots of things that need to be looked at before a home can be placed on any of these lots. There are first verification that the overall conditions that have been set by the Planning Commission that may or may not be set by the city councils, such as, for instance, the removal of the debris and trash on the property, the removal of invasive species, various unsanitary conditions, problems with electricity, that all this has been addressed. So for the Planning Commission, it was very important that the city building officials look at this each time a property is going to be, or lot, rather, is going to be populated with a new, a new home. Okay. Another thing concerning the variances, I think it was clear for us that, but that, again, on that, I'm not speaking for the whole commission, but it was clear for us that what was going to be approved as part of this plan was, in fact, approved and would not require a new variance at the time of a placement of a home. However, what might require a variance at that point is if a one of the new, it's not lot, what is the name again?
Land lease.
New land leases is very small, that the building officials look that the setbacks are actually, inside the lot are actually satisfactory, that the home that is being installed is not too large compared to the size of the lot.
Thank you for your comment.
Yes.
Remember, you still have time to be able to put in other comments. But thank you also for being here to clarify, and we could, as council, in your role as LPC, ask for clarification. Okay? We have the city staff who can do that, but we might come out too as well. Anyone else in the room that would like to make a public comment? If not, we'll go online. Blue, do we have anyone online that would like to make a comment? If you're online, just raise your virtual hand, and we will call on you. I see some. Let me start with Terry, Terry, is it Jarrett? Mr. Jarrett?
Terry Jarrett.
Terry Jarrett, thank you. Okay, so Terry, again, say your name and your address, and you're three minutes, but we don't start you until you've given this name and address.
16638 Forest Street, Lewis, Delaware. Terry Jarrett Saunders. I got a couple of questions and comments. I agree about clarifying the placement permit versus the building permit, because we've had a lot of problems with folks building onto their trailers without permits. So for example, recently, someone built a trailer, put two decks on the side, which would interfere with the...
Placement of a new drill.
Yes, with the setbacks, et cetera. And so, right now, that place is really wide open, people do whatever they want, and they build and make, and place buildings wherever they want. In addition, there is a need for sheds, and sheds have to be included, and they also have a variant. I'd like to talk about the electricity, because in Chapter 70 in our lease, it says, "The landlord is to maintain all water, electrical, plumbing, gas, sewer, septic, and other utilities and services provided by the landlord in good working order." We've been there since 2009, and we've been advocates for manufactured homes, and we've never heard someone say that we are responsible for the electrical lines. BP... lines. BPW has relays, but KDM has put up those old electrical wires years ago, and they have not maintained them. The other thing, because I only have three minutes, is that they are supposed to make a good faith effort to remove vermin and weeds. Now, I'd like to speak about, and many of you have seen, how the stormwater goes underneath our trailer and is basically eroding around our piers. Now, I don't understand when they say there's no standing water. Samuel and I and neighbors walked with G and B before the project began and said, "This is the lowest land. This is the low part. There was nothing in that grant." And I read the grant myself that said that they were responsible for stormwater management. But I said, "It's going to come, and it's, and we have it, and we have pounding." And so maybe I need to send you that email, Mr. Pardee, so you can see how we, our house and a few other houses, have most of the stormwater that has, that drains into the lower half of the park. I've sent it all over town. I may not have sent it to you. The last thing is about the site plan and the automatic grandfathering of the easements. KDM tends to buy standard-sized trailers, but anybody can go to Pott's Nest, or you can drive down Route 13 or 15, and you could see that trailers come in different sizes. So I agree with Mr. Porey that the trailer does not have to be so huge. It can fit within the boundaries of the lot.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right. Other people online, I think. Thank you very much for your comment. You did. I'm just looking through. Others did too. All right, so we have some Planning Commission members. Alan Roth, we'll go to you, and then Deb Ewald, we'll go to you next. But I'll start with Alan. Alan, again, say your name and address.
Thank you. I'm Alan Roth at 437 Kings Highway. I want to clarify and expand on the bullet point in Janelle's memo regarding non-conforming land lease areas and Mr. Pardee's point about the same issue. Janelle's memo states that there are 27 land lease areas that don't have the required 35 feet of lot frontage, and you can see on the plan that she included in your agenda packet where she marked those 27 land lease areas in purple. But there are at least another four land lease areas that the surveyor either failed to measure for lot frontage or failed to include a measurement at all on the survey. And those are D2, D2A, D3, and D7. There's also evidence in the record that we had at the Planning Commission that D2A specifically held a septic tank of at least 1,000 gallons and possibly as much as twice that based on the pump-out records that Ms. Jarrett, who just spoke, provided to us. And if any of these land lease areas don't have the required lot frontage, then they may also fail to have the required 2,400 square feet of lot area. Now, Mr. Pardee spoke in terms of, you know, the concept of, well, we submit a site plan, and that means that, that, you know, these, these land lease areas are somehow blessed once the site plan is approved. Well, that may be Mr. Pardee's concept, but I don't know of anybody on the Planning Commission when we discussed this that had the notion that somehow or other we were blessing land lease areas that didn't comply with these minimum requirements that we have in the code. We have the minimum requirements for a reason, and just because the owner wants to cram more homes into tiny little lots doesn't justify abandoning those requirements and saying somehow or other they're suddenly blessed. And I raise this point because if you decide to confirm the Planning Commission's recommendation, number eight, that the landlord has to obtain all required variances before obtaining permits to place new homes on these, on these sites that don't meet the code requirements, and I hope you will accept that condition, but I hope you'll also make clear that the condition includes any land lease areas for which the proper dimensions were not included on the survey that you have before you now, including those land lease areas where the surveyor failed to include the lot frontage dimensions. And with the 30 seconds I have remaining, let me go back to Mr. Pardee's point about condition number three and his conversation with Denrick. And I think it's very unfortunate because the condition that we came up with, we drew up with Max, but there, I'm just going to point you, and I'll add something in written comments. There is a site restoration requirement in Denrick's regulations. And the lawyer for Denrick, I'll wrap up here. The lawyer for Denrick apparently didn't read that regulation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Roth. All right, Mrs. Ewald. Deb? We're in, we're inmuting you.
Evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I am calling as, and calling in as a--
Deb, you need to do name and address. I'm so sorry, guys.
Deborah Evol, 10 Harborview Road, Lewis, Delaware.
Thank you.
I am calling in this evening, responding as a citizen to what I am hearing from the developer. I agree with what Mr. Roth previously said about the abandoned septic tanks. My greatest concern here for the citizens of Lewis, for the residents that, who are citizens of Lewis that reside in the Donovan Smith MHP, is that we must follow basic health, safety, and public welfare in approving or not approving, as this has been presented. I am going to just address number three with abandoning the septic tanks. If Denrick signed off on that, I think we need to really see documentation of that and also explore what Mr. Roth just referred to with the site restoration. I am very concerned that an application would be approved that has standing water and that the applicant is unwilling to correct the standing water in standard ways through grading or landscaping as we always require on applications for even a minor subdivision. There are up to 129 homes to be approved here, and we actually are considering approving something that does, that has standing water and is not graded properly to provide adequate drainage. I just think that is a public safety and a public health issue. And last, the applicant has stated that number 12 is not doable for them. They can't comply. I would just like to read that again. The condition is to consider site testing of soil and water for contaminants and environmental hazards created by historical sewage overflow on the property. As a child, you know, of the 60s and 70s, who lived through people fighting for the Clean Water Act, yet here we are in 2025 in one of the wealthiest communities in Delaware, and that we would actually grant this refusal of the developer is astounding to me. I ask mayor and city council to really dig deep on this. It's an incredibly complex issue. It was difficult for the Planning Commission and for every commissioner, but some of these are basic health and public safety issues. I thank you for the consideration.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else online whose hand is raised? I don't see any. Last call into the room. Public comment period extends for two weeks, so that would be the 18th by 4 o'clock. Now, we're going to move to, we've heard the public that are here. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make one clarification. We're talking about lot placement permit and Lewis building permit.
Yeah.
That there is, the lot placement permit is a preacher of Sussex County. Lewis has a building permit. I think that terminology is correct. Janelle, do you agree?
That is correct. Great. That's one of, this was one of my questions. It was a language.
I didn't understand that.
Yeah.
Sure. There was some, there was some discrepancy of whether or not the owner would need to get a lot placement permit or a building permit from the city of Lewis. City of Lewis does not have a lot placement permit. It's going to be a building permit. So to the extent there was some back and forth on that terminology, I just wanted to--
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Appreciate that. All right, I'll turn to council. Councilman Elder, you're online. I'm going to let you go first. Sorry that we had to mute you, but we did. So, Councilman Elder, do you have questions? We'll start with you of the applicant. And he's not back online. Okay, we might come back to you if you come forward. Councilman Brown Hicks, would you like to speak first?
The question I had was answered, the lot placement permit.
You got to get the mic a little closer.
The question that I had was answered of the lot placement permit versus the building permit and difference, and you answered that for me.
Great, thank you. Councilman Ritzer.
Can you give me a minute?
I can give you a minute, and I, no problem. And I'd particularly like, related to utilities, if you could focus in on the electric, that would be terrific.
That would be number seven.
Number seven, yes. Deputy Mayor?
I don't have any questions or clarifications.
Okay. I have a question on standing water. If the public says there's standing water, and then the applicant says there isn't anymore, so to the city engineer, I mean, water moves, I understand that, but have you been out on the site? Like, I want some clarification on it.
I have been out on the site. I believe it was on the 16th, and it was right after a one and a half inch stormwater event, storm event that was actually pretty rapid. So that was less than 24 hours. There was standing water in some areas along the street. Some of that was in real wet, from people coming off the street a little bit or coming in parking. Some on the street, but not significant in comparison to the rest of the town. There was still standing water on Kings Highway in Savannah that day. It's kind of hard this month to look at anything. We've had record rainfall. One of my construction sites has had 25 inches of rain this month, so water's not moving like it typically does.
To the city planner, how do you address that with, maybe it's ephemeral standing water? Like, how do you do that on any, any site plan when you're, when you're looking at your approvals?
So typically, what you would do is, and normally what this would be, it would be for, it would be a greenfield. You'd be looking at the development of a new, new manufactured home community. Well, right now, we're looking at, and in that case, you'd be looking at what stormwater management is in place, what swales can be identified and all of that. This is a unique situation that there is no stormwater management in the community because this has existed for 60-plus years. It existed prior to stormwater regulations. It existed prior to Sussex County zoning code. So this just has existed. So unfortunately, there's no mechanism that I can think of off the top of my head that the city has that could require somebody to go after the fact and add additional stormwater management.
Okay. Ms. Priti, did you want to speak to that, or?
Sure. My client did not put the roads in, and my client did not regrade the community. BPW and the engineering firms did that. And so it's, everybody, I think, has to admit is dramatically better than it was. It was awful before. We acknowledge that. But my client had no role in the grading that was done by the construction company that put in the stormwater. Presumably, they were following a grading plan that was reviewed and approved according to some regulation, but my client had no role in that. So all of the grading has been changed with no input from my client. And so I'm not sure what regulation my client would be expected to meet when he didn't have anything to do with the grading that's out there. And then likewise for the streets. We have had record rainfall. Your engineer just confirmed again what I understood the previous testimony to be, that there was not stagnant or standing water in the community in the ground. Maybe there's some on the streets. I don't know. I haven't looked at it myself. But, you know, we've had record rains, and there's been standing water in other places in the city of Lewis. So I don't know, my response, Madam Mayor, would be, I don't know what you would want us to do and what regulation would guide that.
Okay. Again, for the public, this is not us making a decision tonight. Our questions are clarifications. We're listening to you all, and we have our own clarifications as well. I have a question about the, let's call it the, how do you, historical sewage overflow to the city engineer. So I am very well aware and have witnessed crushing of septic tanks. So you crush them, you observe that crushing, there's a practice that's done, and other times you remove it.
Yes.
That makes sense, right, related to septic, just a septic tank. But when you have had historic overflow of sewage, tell me environmentally what the implication is on the groundwater and on the land for that, because that isn't about septic tank.
No, that's not about septic tank. And as Mr. Porey said earlier, you know, all this should have been reported and are reported when you do have overflow events like that, and then Denrick does come out. So the process is, just as Denrick described, is you lime the area, which basically disinfects everything and clean up that area. UV also does a wonderful job, as Denrick put in there for that. So part of, part of a septic system is actually taking the groundwater or the gray water in the drain field and letting the soil filter it. So that is part of what a septic system is. So when you do have the spills, they do clean them up. Now, over and over again, you're going to have a little more lime, and your soil is going to be more basic in there, and you may have a little harder time growing stuff. Not so much from the spills, but from actually the cleanup.
So when, when it's Denrick's practice, when the liming is done and UV rays are adding to it, and obviously there's an improvement now because it's a sewage system, not individual, they don't, it is not their practice to come back and do any kind of testing?
Not, once, when, when the septic tank is removed, everything is removed from that area. In this particular spot, when they were filled and crushed, they were actually, the topsoil removed, everything was filled in on the concrete. So the whole soil base that was there has been moved.
Okay.
I'm not sure about, you know, any spills that were in the roads, but they're now all, if they were, they're all encapsulated under asphalt.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Andrew, just a quick clarification. So yours, did you just say that once a tank is removed or crushed, that the topsoil is also removed?
Well, the topsoil is all moved.
It's moved. But that's not placed back in, that's taken away?
The topsoil, topsoil removed, and then clean fill was actually placed inside where that tank is, because that tank is much larger. There are thousands of gallons.
Is the topsoil hauled out of the site, or is it replaced in? I think that's what the deputy mayor is asking.
I can't answer what was done on site on that at this time.
Okay. All right. Yes, you're--
Yeah, ma'am. Can, I was taking notes during the presentations, and my notes might not be accurate, so please help me out. Did I understand someone, either Mr. Pardee or Mr. Lyons, say that there were 24 septic tanks on the site, and of those 24, 22 remained and two were removed? Is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Now, the septic tanks, of course, are reliant upon the other parts of the infrastructure that convey waste to those tanks. What was done with that kind of infrastructure? I'm talking about the pipes lead from the living units to, excuse me, to the tanks.
I would have to get that information back to you. I don't have that on the asphalt on exactly what was done there.
Sorry, we can't put back up to the public, but you can put comments in. We can't go back to the public. I apologize.
All right. So you'll provide that during the public comment period, please. Okay.
That's really important. I think it's very important to city staff, city engineer, also to Mr. Walton. If there's something that comes up here that you want to put into the public comment period, that allows council to hear all of that response. That expedites our process and our analysis. Same for anyone in the public, and we do read all of those. Obviously, the applicant, too.
I'm going to call out-- I'm going to call out to, I believe Alan Roth is still on with us. And Mr. Roth, you described, I think you listed four sites in your comment, and I wrote down, I think, three of the four, but I, it's the fourth one. May I read what I wrote down, and could you help me out with the other, the fourth one? I wrote D2, D2A, D7, and I think there's a fourth one.
The other was D3.
E3.
All right, thank you. And again, those are ones which, can you describe again what the issue is for this board?
And you're requesting that clarification from the planning commission, not from a citizen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I, yes. Is he identified himself?
Yes, he did.
Commissioner, right. Yeah. Thank you.
My, my, my point was on the plan, those four lots don't show any lot frontage.
Okay.
Okay.
And that one of those in other evidence submitted for the record showed a septic tank located beneath that lot. Now, in, in the, in the, in the record evidence, that septic tank appears to have been under what's shown as D3, but in this plan, D3 has been subdivided into two lots. I think you lost me there.
No, no, we're good.
Yeah.
And thank you for clarifying.
D3 has been subdivided into two lots, and so this, at least on, on where the, where the, where the earlier drawing is shown, the septic tank would appear to have been under D2A.
Okay, so that's, that's more clarification we might need back from city staff and engineers as well. Okay. Unless you, unless you have a note.
It's a note that needs to be added to the site plan,
Okay.
which the staff has already reached out to the surveyor saying that needs to be identified prior to final site plan approval.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's your, it's your time. Yeah.
Thank you. I, the question I'm going to have, I have is directed to about the storage issue that's been raised by some of the members of the community. And my question is directed to Janelle to speak to the use of sheds or the placement of sheds on the individual home sites. That, those sheds would count, this is a question. It sounds like I'm making a statement, but it's a related question. Those sheds would count towards lot coverage, correct? The city lot coverage?
Correct.
Correct. And for the purpose of our public that's here attending, what is that lot coverage?
65%.
Okay.
This one did not change.
Correct. So it's allowed up to 65% coverage, right? Right. And that includes any kind of impervious material on the site? For example, if a person had a concrete or asphalt driveway, that would count towards that lot coverage.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And again, that shed would require a permit, an application, correct, from the city?
Correct.
To be prior to being placed?
Yes.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you. You asked, the mayor asked me to speak to the electrical side, correct? And I was very interested to hear what Mr. Potty said and relieved, actually, to hear about the fact that the easement or the lack of easement has been identified and that that is going to be addressed.
Yes, sir.
This is a big, this needs to be done, and I appreciate it very much. The, but nonetheless, there is a question about the private side of the distribution system, privately owned. And is there, has the, your, your client made any commitment to, to improve the system? To bring it into, it's been suggested that it hasn't, it doesn't meet code. It's been suggested. Is there anything that your client is prepared to, to do to reassure the, your residents and our citizens that that will be addressed?
Sure. Let me start by explaining that under Chapter 70, which was mentioned by one of the members of the public who testified. The landlord does not provide the electric in this community. It's not a utility provided by the landlord, so he has zero obligation under the law to maintain it. Now, what he has done is he's provided a junction box that connects the BPW's main line coming into the community. And he has maintained that. That is to code. I'm not aware of any violations of any code requirements with regard to that. But I think a lot of the issue has been historically where the electric line connects into the home, which is the tenant's responsibility under the law. Now, my client has, from time to time, his foreman has, from time to time, voluntarily helped some of the residents with the connections into their homes, even though my client's not obligated to do that. So I think there needs to be some clarity brought to the forefront about where my client's responsibility begins and ends. And I would submit to you respectfully that it begins and ends at the junction box. He has to maintain that junction box in, in, in compliance with code requirements, and he's done so. But when the line leaves that junction box and goes into the individual home, that's the tenant's responsibility.
How about if it, how about if it loops? I mean, I'm sorry, it's not a very technical term. But I know that when there are hanging lines in front of my house, I'm checking to see, is that a utility or is that a broadband service? When, I, I'm hearing what you're saying is at the junction box, but to, before it gets to the home, that angle, whose responsibility is that?
BPW.
BPW.
Right.
May I speak to this, please?
I'm sorry?
May I speak to your statement? I'm familiar with the layout of the community. I'm familiar with the distribution system in the community as well. And I understand the difference between that which is owned and maintained by the BPW and that which is not owned and maintained by the BPW. The vast majority of the distribution system in the park is not owned by the BPW. There is a handoff. I think, I'm a little confused with your term, the junction box.
Yeah.
If you are using, you are suggesting that the meter base is the junction box and that that is the handoff, that's a question.
That sounds right to me. I, I don't.
Okay, because the high voltage distribution system is in fact privately owned. That is your owner, your client's responsibility. He owns that as not owned and maintained.
And you're asking that as a clarification question for when we meet again. Okay.
Right.
So, okay.
So I, you know, I, it, it concerns me that we have residents who have described a voltage or interruption in service due to possibly a circuit being overloaded. And if that is a condition of what this community is experiencing, that concerns me. It also concerns me to think that, and we require, I believe I'm correct in this, I believe, Janelle, we don't have a building department person here, but possibly Andrew and even Max could speak to this, that a requirement of a home being habitable is that there be water, you know, some kind of sewage system that works, these function, and also electricity. And if that electric distribution system is not reliable or not functioning, I.
So I'm, I'm going to turn that into a clarification because we have time.
It's a concern.
I should give a quick.
Okay. You have a question on this?
Yeah, a clarification. So, Mr. Potty, you said that whether we're going to call it the junction box or the centralized area where energy is, you know, distributed, let's just call it, you know, you've acknowledged that, that your client owns that and maintains it. And is responsible for maintaining it. And that's what you're saying as well.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I agree with that, but what I'm saying is beyond that, once that junction or that handoff is created, then that, the distribution system that runs the electricity through the park, that is all privately owned poles. Those are not BPW poles. That infrastructure, the primary cable or the overhead lines are not BPW lines.
I think that's accurate. My understanding is that Mr. Potty said that those lines are owned, are managed and owned and maintained by the residents.
No, when it touches the home, that, that, what I would say, what we need is clarification.
That's what I really am looking for.
What we really need is, and we're going to use, use common sense from the juncture box to the home, who owns the, who owns the wire, at what point does the citizen, the resident have responsibility? And then reliability and safety of that service. So it's who owns what, and if there's a reliability issue, who's responsible? That would be something that council would like to have clarification on. It doesn't have to be at this point, but we need that in the public record, and we'll, we're letting you know we're going to be asking you that question when we see you again.
Sure. I understand completely. And just to clarify my client's position, my client didn't install the electric lines from the, whether it's called a junction box or a meter box to the homes. I assume that those were installed by BPW. I don't know that. But under the law, under Chapter 70, because my client is not the electric provider, my client does not have a legal obligation to maintain those lines. And my understanding is that some of the problems have been the connection into the home and occasionally overloading that connection, maybe with, you know, in times of extreme heat, the air conditioning's running, you run the microwave, the TV and everything else, and it overloads whatever the capacity is for that home in the meter box. So what I would say to you, just for consideration, is whatever the code requires of my client in terms of maintaining that meter box, that's on us 100%. And, and I think before it gets there is 100% BPW. The question really is what happens between the meter box and the home? I'm telling you, under the law, we don't have an obligation. That's the tenant's responsibility, just like it is to get cable television. And, you know, in a typical landlord resident situation, like in apartments, it's different because the code says the landlord has to provide that stuff. In the Chapter 70, the landlord only has to maintain that stuff if the landlord is the provider of the sewer water or electric, which my.
Not, not putting you on the spot right now, but that's something we're going to want clarification on so that we understand it. And my other question is, so want clarification, and then can we request, quote, demand BPW be present and clarify their responsibility too?
I'm going to ask him to be here.
Okay.
Definitely, or have, or at least put something into the record.
Perfect.
And just so we're all clear, it's, I did have some conversations with BPW about this. They do own some of the poles.
That's right.
Within, within the system. They do not own some of the poles within the system. There was, there's an easement, or there's an area which required to eat.
And if they don't own the poles, who owns those poles?
So that would be, as I, as I've been told, I didn't do any independent investigation, right? That is, that, that is what they call the private side of the system or the, or the park owner side of the system.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to look at the citations, Mr. Potty. I just want to make sure we're all wrong with the same or, and then have the BPW make that representation. Sort of how that works.
One last point, if I may, Madam Mayor. If there's an opportunity to address and clarify this in the easement document, we'll certainly do that. I think it's in everybody's best interest, regardless where the responsibility lies, that we have clarity.
Yes. Thank you for offering that.
Sure.
Other questions from council for clarification?
Councilman Elder is on.
Oh. Okay, Councilman Elder, you're back on. So go ahead, Councilman Elder. You have a question? We're unmuting you. You're unmuted. Joe, you can speak. Joe, go ahead. He's unmuted. Blue can't do anything else. Councilman Elder, we're all waiting. Want to hear your question. Feel free to speak. We will find out what his questions are, and we'll ask him to put those into the public record. Okay. Councilman Ritzer, do you have the other question?
Yeah.
Yep. Hold on. Okay. Anyone else? No? All right. So we know the public comment period. Thank you, Ms. Brady. Thank you for those who came out. Thank you for those online. The public comment period stays open for two weeks until the 18th at 4 o'clock. So please use that. That is a tool that, that you actually will see some responses from the applicant, from the city perhaps, maybe from BPW. And then from that point, council will look at those comments, and then we'll schedule when we will actually deliberate on that. I thank everybody for their time this evening. Thank you to the applicant as well, city staff, and to the planning commission for their hard work. Thank you very much. This hearing's closed. I have a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Hearing closed. Thank you.